Okay, we have a quorum, so I will call the meeting of the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee to order. It is 5:00. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I believe Mrs. Mattson will be back momentarily with the flag in the interim. We'll wait until she gets back. I will just announce who is on the call. From the school committee, we have Mrs. Robichaud, Mrs. Mattson, Mrs. Kozel, Mrs. Chardier, and myself, Mrs. Hughes. We should be having others join us momentarily. We have Dr. Kazimant, our Superintendent of Schools, Kate Colleyce, our Assistant Superintendent, Ann Marie Geister, our Business Manager, and Susan Varney, our Attorney. And we'll just give Lori a second to come back with the flag. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded with the help of Templeton Community TV. So we thank them for their assistance and partnership in getting this meeting livestreamed. Mrs. Mattson, okay, there you are. Do we have our flag?
Yes.
Okay, so we will do the Pledge of Allegiance then. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands.
Which it stands, one nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
With liberty. And justice for all.
Right, so we will jump right into the agenda. I just want to make the statement that we're not doing public comment tonight, since this is a finance-focused meeting. So if there's anybody out there watching and you have comments or questions, please feel free to send them in to Mrs. Varney in advance of our meeting next Wednesday on the 20th, which is our regular business meeting, and we're happy to take all public comments at that time. But we still will keep an eye out on the live YouTube stream. So if you are watching and you do have a comment or thought, we're happy to at least keep an eye out, and if we can address it, we will. Mr. Marx has joined us from the school committee, so I will make note of that. And at that point, I am going to turn the meeting over first to Dr. Kazimant, and we'll talk about where we are with a budget, since we really haven't seen, as far as I know, anything come out.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. That would still be the case, quite frankly. So, but we are, so when we talk about numbers from the state, we have not received any of those. Generally, we get the, you know, the Chapter 70 workbook, as we call it, and we're able to then, from there, start plugging in numbers. The, one of the things that we were working on prior, well, I think right at our last meeting, is waiting for the school choice preliminary numbers to come out. So I want to make sure that I'm clear that, because this has been, you know, misconstrued in the past, that whatever numbers that we talk about for FY now, they're preliminary until June. So how many we say coming, you know, that are school choicing in or out are ultimately just preliminary, but we do have those, and that always gives us, and when we receive this information on or about the second or third week of December, it was a little bit later this year, but certainly understandable, you know, that's another big piece to our puzzle, quite frankly. And the other piece of information, again, it's not complete, but we have one of the retirement numbers from one of our, is it, it's not from the, it's not from the Mass TRS, so it must be from...
It's from Worcester County.
Worcester County. So those are, those numbers are starting to, I guess, we'll use the word trickle, trickle in. The other bit of information that I think that will, again, we don't have any solid numbers yet, but the, what they're calling the Ursa II monies, which the COVID relief, the second tranche of monies, actually has made it to the state. So the letter has made it to the state, that Desi confirmed that on Thursday, when we had our commissioners' meeting. It's going to be set up in the same way as Ursa I, which was the first COVID relief package, and it'll run along the same lines as last time, which is Title I students. This time, they have told us to expect any, a multiplier by at least 3.7 or 3.8 to the monies that, well, unless our Title I numbers drastically went up or down, it should be roughly three times the amount that we received at the beginning of the year, with the same stipulations, for the most part, mostly COVID relief, you know, mostly those things that impacted the district because of COVID, which left us a pretty wide, you know, path to use, and, you know, because, again, we have more staff, we're actually paying more salaries, I don't know if we have more staff, you know, just given that folks are, some folks are not teaching in person, and we need, we need people here while folks are teaching from remotely due to ADA issues, et cetera. So, all that being said, we still, we don't know that. We don't know that number, but we will have that by the, you know, we're told pretty confidently, and Kate and I were on the call on Thursday, but by the end of this month, which is great. That money is, you know, supposed to carry us for, you know, for quite some time, because given the fact that what they think is the next COVID relief package, if in fact there is one, it would probably focus on municipalities. And at least that was the discussion that we had on Thursday. So what do we have? Well, we've, you know, we know what our expenses are, we've, or many of them, not all. We, a big picture is school choice. We could certainly going to talk about that today. And, Ann Marie, am I missing anything? I can't remember if I've, if I'm missing anything.
Well, I think we've said it in the past before, but our E and D was certified at $481,000, so that's something to work with, too. It's quite a bit lower than it has been the last couple of years, but we'll work with what we got.
So let's talk about school choice, because it's usually a, you know, a pretty, I would say, involved conversation. It has been for the last couple of years. This committee has, you know, and we have made an active effort to lower the number of children whom we school choice into the district with especially focused at the elementary level, given class sizes. As we remember, when, pardon me, when Phillipston was closed and those students came up, and I'm talking about under normal conditions, you know, I don't, again, we're going to have to kind of disconnect from COVID just for a bit. We had cut one, we cut one teacher per level at the elementary level, ultimately. So basically, district-wide, we went from five to four. And what we projected last, last year, last, you know, February and March, when we were going towards this, we had numbers anywhere, depending, but anywhere from 26 to 29, almost 30 a class, and we were very concerned about that, again, pre-COVID. In reality, those, those class sizes are not that, because many students or parents have opted to remotely educate their children. So there aren't, and plus, by the way, I should also just throw out there that, you know, because of COVID, the, you know, the rules and the guidelines, we can't, at the very most, or the very least, I should say, that, you know, six or three feet, our children at three feet, we couldn't fit those students in their, in their classrooms if we wanted to. But in looking ahead with the, you know, with the vaccine and the rollout, you know, we're hopeful that by next September, that we'll at least start to enjoy what we used to remember as typical, you know, education, meaning that kids will be actually in the buildings rather than remote and hybrid. So given that, our numbers, and I think I brought this up a couple of weeks ago, quite frankly, is that those numbers haven't, haven't changed. If you take the total number of second, third, fourth graders, or pardon me, K through four graders, those, when you divide by four, they're still in the same range. We didn't have a lot of school choice kids at the elementary level. Most of our school choice kids were at the, at the middle school, and for all the reasons that we, we've talked about ad nauseam. But, but we're, you know, that, that very well may be part of, you know, the problem solving that we'll have to do in the future. What we think we know, staying on school choice for a second, is that, you know, things won't be back to quote-unquote "old normal." They might be new normal or better than what we see as normal. And so, you know, we think that the monies that we'll receive in Ursa II will hopefully be able to fund the staffing that we have now. How will they be deployed will depend on how many students we have either in or out, and decisions we make around that, or the decisions the state makes around remote versus, say, in-person, which we have not obviously delved into at all. But we should have those, again, that'll be something to consider as we look to spend, to allocate the monies that we are going to, you know, that we'll eventually receive at the end of January. I'm going to share, hopefully, because I don't do this very well, as everyone knows, but I'm going to try to share a slide. Now, please tell me you can see this, because that would make me really happy, because I generally don't do this very well. Okay, great. So what you're seeing is that we've done this every year since I've been here, in terms of a line report, and when you start looking at these, you'll start seeing numbers going, or the lines going down. We certainly have seen a huge decline in school choice in. That is, that's to be expected, quite frankly. We did not accept any school choice but six students at the first grade level, no kindergarten level, pardon me, pardon me, kindergarten level, and did not replace any students that may have gone to Monty Tech or to, you know, or to anywhere else, we, or graduating class, we simply just kind of went with it. Also, as parents moved out of the district, we did not allow them, as per the state's guidance, didn't allow them to stay what we used to call just in-place school choice. We just would normally just keep, if they were here and then they moved, we would just, we would just move them to school choice. And of course, we've talked about that ad nauseam. So, you know, we've lost anywhere between 20 or 35 kids that way, just in general, just them moving, and then we did not school choice in-place them, okay? So it does, it didn't surprise me that we, you know, that we dropped, well, considerably, right, roughly, what, 40, 50, 50-some-odd students. But I think, in the strangest of times, it doesn't surprise me, because people definitely like it here, and we know that, is that we've, we've seen the lowest number of students school choicing out that we've seen in recent memory. So 109 students school choiced out. Now, that's, that's fantastic, right? I mean, the differential is the lowest. It's been quite a while, which is 83, right? Again, this is all preliminary. I just want to make sure I keep saying that over and over again. We don't actually know until June. But these numbers generally hold, although this would be a year that I would say to you, do not lock in on these numbers, just because, you know, there's just a lot of, just a lot of different stuff that is happening. But by December, generally, kids are usually staying with, staying put at least for the year. What I do oftentimes is I give you, and this is a little bit warped, I apologize, but, you know, what's the differential about that? And, you know, it's the lowest differential that we've seen, meaning after you take the school choice in money and you consider the school choice out money, all preliminarily, you know, it's one of the lower totals that we've, or differences that we've had. And, you know, what, what comes from, you know, considering what effect this has of school choice monies, is that we, we pay some hard costs out of here, right? We, it's usually our insurance, right, our half of the insurance. We have staff positions that come out of here as well. So in terms of school choice, I'm just going back and forth. These are the only two slides that I've, you know, really worked on, because it's the only information I have at this point. You know, that, that certainly has, you know, affected, you know, our thought process moving forward. So I think I'll just pause there for a second and just maybe turn to Ann Marie for, to see if I've missed anything, or is there something I should, you'd like to highlight?
Not on the student part. I can talk about when we start talking about the forecast. I don't know if we have any questions on this.
Yeah.
The student piece.
This is Margaret. I can't see anyone, just because you're sharing the screen, so if someone does have a question, please feel free just to speak up and, and ask away. And I'm going to take it by the silence that there are no questions at this point, so if you want to move ahead, that would be great.
Okay. So I think I'll stop sharing the screen, because I really don't need, unless folks want to see that again. But so I'm going to turn it over to Ann Marie about the forecast, because I know that that was, that was attached to the agenda.
So at our last meeting, we, you guys had asked, like, we really needed to forecast to see where we are with school choice. So I updated the forecast that we had last year and attached it to the agenda so that everyone can see it. Let me just go over a couple assumptions with the forecast. I assumed that every year, like, currently, we have five, a total of nine teachers and one assistant principal in there for salaries. This assumption in the forecast assumes that each year, we're taking either, like, for next year, I have the assistant principal budgeted in the general fund, and then nine teachers. Then the following year, we have eight teachers. So every year, it's taking a teacher and moving it to the general fund, so that in a few years, we'll have all of those staff salaries back over into the general fund where they belong, and then this money can be used to focus on larger one-time purchases or emergencies of tuitions. So that's what this assumption is. But as you can see, at the top of the sheet, there's, I started with last year, and I just put the number of students in one column, and I'm assuming at the top that every year, we lose revenue on 30 students. If we continue with that trend, this school choice is not going to cover us long enough to get our salaries and health insurance out of the general fund. So these are things that we've got to think about going down the road. Do we want to maintain the school choice that we have now? Do we want to increase it? Do we want to take two teachers every year out versus one? Right now, the health insurance, we've been, the past couple of years, we've been pretty good about moving our split. We were at one point a few years ago, we were about 50-50 in general fund and school choice. Currently, right now, in FY '21, I'm anticipating a 10-2 split. My budget forecast for next year is a 9-3. That split's not quite as easy as the teacher assumption, because it all depends on how many people have taken it on and what the rate increases are. So this is kind of what it, it looks like right now, but, you know, health insurance is kind of volatile, and we won't really know. I don't know if anyone has any questions on anything yet.
Does anyone have any questions? So I just want to make sure I understand. So the assumptions here were, we would lose 30 students, 30 school choice students each year, because we'll assume we're not replacing those that leave. So that.
Correct.
To decrease an estimated revenue. And then you've made some assumptions on items that we need to move to the general fund. Of course, we haven't addressed how we're going to fund that, the general fund, but that's the assumption for this. And with those assumptions in place, we would run out of money in the, the school choice fund for FY, what is it, 25?
25.
So we'd really get three years, because we're in, what, FY '21?
Yeah.
We're doing FY '22, '23, '24, and then really, we're at the tipping point where school choice can't fund any of the expenses that we have, that we really need, just for business as usual.
Right.
Okay. This is, I find this very helpful, because I think when we start to have the discussions about our school choice and how many students we might want to let in, this becomes a key analysis to determine, you know, what does it mean if we don't take any versus we strategically, you know, look at which classrooms can handle additional, and, and, you know, you hate to play with class size to make money, but we still have to operate. And unfortunately, when step costing comes to play, if we lose a student, we can't just take a teacher down. That's not how it works. So this is, this is very helpful. Thank you for, for this. This is very, very helpful. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay, I'm going to say that there aren't any at this point. And I'll turn it back. Is there anything else? I know that we're, we're still kind of waiting for information. And I guess, you know, if, is there anything else that you wanted to present to us this evening?
Um, there isn't anything else. We had, back at one of our subcommittee meetings in the fall, we had a tentative draft, but that was very tentative. Some of those numbers are finalizing and coming in, like Dr. Kazimant had said, we have our assessment for the Worcester County retirement. It's not good. It went up 28%. That's $125,000 increase over last year. If our group insurance for the teacher retirement comes in just as high, we're going to, we're going to have some issues. This school choice is going to go a lot quicker than we think.
So it's, you know, it's a double-edged sword. And, you know, where do you, if you can, take school choice students in, right? If that's, if that's the, if that's what needs to happen. Or if you don't, what does that do for you? So it's, it's, you know, it's a, when, some people think it's a good problem to have. I, I don't know. I think we're, you know, we are certainly very dependent on school choice. I think any district that has school choice is dependent to some, to some level. But, you know, we, there are some, there are some expenses in there that really, we all know that really shouldn't be in there, and they would be catastrophic if we couldn't, if we could not cover them.
Okay. With that being said, I think the only other thing that we really need to focus on, and it's probably going to be difficult just with the uncertainty of things, is what does our budget calendar look like for FY '22? I believe the, the governor is supposed to release his budget. I think it's on the 27th of January, is when he is by law required to release his numbers, which of course, then we plug in and we go from there. Between now and our budget hearings, obviously, we need to plan, I guess, some, some things. We've got to have some heat communications. Normally, we like to try and meet with the towns and have a tri-board meeting. I know it's been difficult with, with the Zoom meetings and whatever, to try and get some of those things to happen. But it probably would be either a good idea to, to entertain a tri-board meeting of some sort, or just speaking, maybe meeting in advance with the two towns, even separately if we have to. We, on the calendar, we had initially a budget hearing set for February 24th, and then the vote with your second budget hearing and a vote on March 3rd. And I know we've done, some, some years, we've only done one budget hearing, depending on what's happening. But March 3rd would probably be the latest that we'd want to have a budget hearing in order to fit into the timeframe that we have to meet, assuming that all of the town meetings happen as scheduled. So I think we need to start thinking now strategically, you know, how do we need to plan things out? And then how do we back into, what does this committee need? And timing of that, so that we can make sure we have enough time with the numbers to have a budget that we're ready to present, so that, Dr. Kazimant, you then have time to prepare our budget book and everything else that needs to happen. So I don't know if you've got some thoughts on that?
Yes, I think that, one, I think we're, I think we're on time. I think that we've, we have the, is, I'm thinking back, is that, yes, I don't know that we would have our, our budget by now. Like, depending on if it was an election year or not, we all know how that goes, right? So, you know, right now, we have our, what we think are our expenses. For the, you know, for the most part, we, we have our school choice, we have one of the retirements. So, you know, I think that, given the numbers that we, that we need, the information that we need, and if the state doesn't run into a problem in terms of timing, I mean, a significant problem in terms of when they're able to produce or release budget numbers, I think, you know, I think that the 24th will be, would be, would be a good, would be a solid target. I mean, we'll know within a week or so if, if the state's going to have difficulty, you know, for whatever reason. But they have not signaled, by the way, any, you know, delay in those numbers. So I don't, I mean, I defer to Ann Marie, who's, you know, obviously tied in with Masbo, but I haven't heard of, you know, those numbers being delayed, or the budget being delayed.
No, I haven't heard of it being delayed either.
Okay. So I guess then, really, I know this, we can make this a nice, short meeting, because there's really no other items that we have to hit tonight. We had executive session on here in case there was something that came up, since we have a lot of things in the works, which we will not be going into, and we'll deal with that next week at our regular meeting on the 20th, which is when our next meeting is, Wednesday, the 20th, at 5:00. What does this committee think about meeting again, outside of our regular business meeting, so we can focus on those numbers? We had a, a meeting just tentatively penciled in for February 3rd, but I'm looking at the TCTV schedule, because we've got, we always have to try and manage within TCT's, TCTV's schedule so that they can get us broadcast. We could do a meeting on the 3rd. It looks like we would have a hard stop at 6:00 PM, because there needs to be at least a half an hour in between. So that is an option. I don't know if anyone feels we might want to give more time, since it would be the first chance we've had to work with the numbers that we would have gotten from the state. We'll have to, we'll get the allocations to each of the towns at that point as well. And if that's the case, we can look for a different date. But does that first week there, I'm just trying to look at my big calendar, in February, sound like a good time to meet again, because the state numbers will be out by then? And then that'll give you guys a few days in the weekend, which, you know, we don't want you to work on the weekend, but worst case, if you had, it would give a couple extra days for you to do some crunching and whatnot. And I just want to make the comment, two things. One, that Mrs. Trifilo and Mr. Mason did join our meeting about five after five, so they are on, online now with us. And Mike Curry just made a note that they haven't heard about any delay on the state's FY '22 numbers either. So we seem to be in consensus with that. So thank you, Mike, for, for that comment. Looking at the TCTV schedule, we could probably meet, looks like they have nothing on that Monday, the 1st of February, and it looks like they have nothing on the 4th of February, which would be... which would be a Thursday. So does anyone have any thoughts, so I can, we can reach out to TCTV with some possible dates, and they can confirm one way or the other for us? Would the Thursday, the 4th be something that would look good for everybody?
Yeah, either one.
Thursdays are tough for me, Margaret.
What about?
I can't do Thursday the 4th.
Thursday the 4th. What about Monday, the 1st?
Sounds good.
Monday, the 1st? Okay. Okay.
That's fine, Margaret.
Okay. Susan, would you mind just reaching out to, to Steve and TCTV to see if they could put us on their calendar? As I said, it looks like they're open right now on the 1st with nothing scheduled, so hopefully that would work, and we would do 5:00 again. That'll give us more time, too, if we need to extend the discussion, since it'll really be the first time that we've had a chance to look at everything together.
Okay.
One other thing is, we have a finance subcommittee meeting scheduled for tomorrow. The subcommittee is myself and Vicky and Hank. Since there's not a lot to discuss as of yet, do we want to push that meeting off? And if so, I'll reach out to the two of you, and we can work offline to reschedule?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay. I'll text you guys later, and we'll figure out a date, and we'll get that rescheduled. So tomorrow's meeting will cancel and reschedule it for either a week or two out. It just is, I don't know what we'll talk about, so. All right. Are there any other questions, comments, anything from the school committee? Okay, seeing nothing, Dr. Kazavant or Anne Marie have anything to add budget-wise?
I'm all set.
Well, I just want to say thank you for putting together the information on school choice, because it is something that we grapple with year after year. I think more information we can put out there, especially to our towns, so they understand, you know, one, our issue with our E and D, as you mentioned earlier, Anne Marie, as well as the issue with the school choice numbers and what we do for, and the potential of that money drying up. I don't think we can say it earlier often enough, to ensure that we're all on the same page, to be able to address whatever funding issues we have going forward. Okay, so with that being said, if there is nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion from Mrs. Kojal. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. I'm going to give it to Mr. Mason, and we'll do roll call. Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Mattson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojal?
Yes.
Mrs. Chartier?
Yes.
Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Hi.
Mrs. Trifalo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes. So once again, thank you, everyone, for attending this evening. Thank you for everyone who's watching us online. We will see you Wednesday, the 20th, at our next meeting. So good night, thank you.